I do not know. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
Right. We keep on hearing that well, it's not operational, we took it offline. Henrietta, can we actually send some divers or get an engineer to inspect that tank? I mean, we would need it for population growth as a storage facility.
Well, I think one of the things that Inez and Jane discussed is the water study, and he's saying in the initial study was that we need to have more water sources, but that's not a location. We have a volume of water that's being run off. We need to add more water volume, but not there. Where we're growing, in the Enix area, growing north of San Antonio. So if we're going to add something and doing it well and spend that money, we'd be in a different location. The location.
Could it just serve as a storage dump? Can serve just...
Conceivably, yes. Yes, it could.
And so he can look into that. This is your water engineer.
Because it seems like we're going on assumptions that there's bacteria there. Has anyone actually tested it, just in respect to it?
Exactly.
The story I got was that it was the floater that they could never get to work, and that's why they took it offline. There's a lot of stories.
I don't... I can only report to you what's been told to me. I've seen the records, no reports, anything like that that tells me what actually occurred.
So is there a way of testing if there's actually bacteria there?
If the well is plugged, it would be very expensive to recommission that well to do the testing. But it is conceivable, yes. It may not be worth the money to do so, but...
Engineer, my telly's standing up over there. Go on, you gotta get off this stuff.
I was just gonna say...
You're talking about tanks?
I don't have any TCQ reports on there or anything that showed that, but I think that was before my time when it was there. So I can look into that and get a response back to you on what we have or why it was actually closed in there.
Do you know if guys realize what "I'll look into that" means? And so they stopped, "Well, look into that," and closed wells. Because they're looking at it, and he says it's conceivable, because for a price, they'll do anything, right?
It's conceivable, if we're going to do it, it's proven.
So down to "Well, look into that." Because then, eventually, you're like, "Oh, why would we spend so much money?" Like, "Prove these." Is it looking into it?
Looking into that.
They think he's looking into that for testing.
When the divers went into the tanks, did they see just regular maintenance that had to be done or something that we're falling behind on?
With the exception of the Plaza Ground Storage Bank, the divers went into all the tanks. They inspected them, and they're all in fairly good shape. And there weren't... There wasn't anything alarming on the inside, of course, except for the Plaza tank. There is debris in all of them. There's basically sand that comes out of your wells and settles in the tank because water goes into the tank and it doesn't have any velocity. So sand being heavy settles to the bottom. That's completely normal. Completely normal. And they simply have to be taken out of service. Everyone's going to want to clean that one. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think, generally speaking, there's probably a couple of inches of sand in the bottom. The Plaza wall has four or five inches, and that's a concern. But generally, they're in good shape, and there aren't that many concerns. And of course, we're addressing what was in the report that needed to be made.
And your recommendation, and I'll let you go, how often should we dive into the tanks?
They're inspected every year.
And that should continue, okay.
By a company named Texas Tanks, it's a separate entity. And so the more people that check, they should be able to check some balances. Actually, when we looked at the price, and I know, we'll get first, when we looked at the price in reference to the recommendation, we looked at two different vendors, and Texas Tank is actually a little vendor who can come and do these things that he's recommending.
And you said once a year. I believe they do it every three months. Because we had a report in October, and his report was in January.
I think the report in October was for the previous year. It just surfaced. But it's basically done once a year.
You might not be reading the same reports.
Okay.
That sounds like a scuba diving event that we could sponsor.
Over the air, over the water. No problem. I can get your demonstration on that.
Any other questions on the tanks?
No, thank you. Thank you for taking your time and coming on here.
And just quickly, on the water modeling effort, we are still on schedule. We're completing the model this month. In April, we'll be calibrating it, so we'll be spending time here with the staff, comparing our model to how the system actually runs. And in May, we'll come up with... We'll run, basically, diagnostic scenarios on the system and come up with system deficiencies and then plans to fix along with cost estimates. And we're hoping to wrap up that effort in June. So again, we're on schedule, and we're making good progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Don't sit down. Okay, now we're going to go on to item 1M, update or repairs of the Auto G Deviant Event Center.
All right. I believe I was here maybe a month, six weeks ago, and I gave you an extensive briefing on our plans for the event center. Thank you. I'm here to report that we have obviously begun those efforts, and we've made pretty good progress. We're basically on schedule. What we've accomplished so far is we've done the mold study. A consultant come in and look at the mold at the event center and do a report. And this assessment is a precursor to an actual remediation program. They're going to issue us a report on how they're going to fix the mold. But the mold is something that we're going to do fast because the order priority is to fix the roof, fix the HVAC, and only then can you fix the mold. So that's something that we'll actually do that while we're studying upfront. We will start with the roof assessment and design of roof repairs in a couple of weeks from now. That work will take about a couple of months, and that will be finished right around the end of May. We are actively looking at the HVAC system now as the air conditioning and heating system. We're looking at the controller. We think it's fundamentally in good shape, except for there's a few critical parts that need to be replaced. We'll be working with a vendor to what we call recommission the system, which is basically put it back together and get it working again. And we're going to have to crawl through the building wire by wire, unit by unit, check it all out, and get it working as it should. So that is currently underway. In the next week or so, I'll be providing Ms. Turner with a purchase order to get that vendor onboard so that we can work together to get the system back up. The other major part is the work outside the building. As you may recall, some of the sidewalk and flat work outside the building has to be torn out and reconstructed at grades that allow the building to kind of breathe and release moisture. We've not yet begun that work, but it doesn't take that long, and we'll be able to get that complete along with all the other components. All the designs will come together towards the end of May. And it's our intent to have all the designs done, complete, and reviewed in... Let me get this over here. In June. We want to bid the project in July. We want to be able to evaluate the contractors in August. And if you recall, in the last presentation I made, we were recommending a competitive sealed proposal bid. And what this allows you to do is not only to consider the contractor's financial bid, but to consider his qualifications, to consider his staff, and more importantly, to consider his approach to getting the work done so that there's minimal impact on the event center and any events that are scheduled. We think that's a very prudent approach for the city, for you to have a little more choice other than just a little bit. This doesn't take very long, but we thought it'd be good for you to have the opportunity to interview those contractors that rank high and make an informed decision with information in addition to price. We think that will take only a short period of time, maybe a week or two. And then we're hoping to come to you in September with a recommendation for work, get the contractor started in September. We think the whole contract's going to take about six months, so we're hoping that sometime next spring, everything will be fixed. Any questions?
When did you say that the report for the mold was going to be back?
The initial assessment is done, and we have that. I don't recall the exact schedule on the development of the remediation effort. I don't have that, but I can give that to you.
When are you going to bring that report to council?
I can provide that report at any time.
My curiosity is just to make sure that it's still adequate to have the whole functions in without...
Yes. Nothing that we've encountered so far indicates to us that there's going to be an interruption of any events. You don't need to cancel any events. You don't need to stop scheduling events. And again, when I talked about the competitive seal process, we want a contractor that's going to work with the city when there are events so that any inconvenience is held to a minimum. There's going to be some, but we want to make sure that that contractor is very aware that when events occur, that as quick as it's out of the way, and nobody gets hurt, those kind of things. And we want a contractor that's going to be able to work with us.
Will we be able to do like the roof and the AC at the same time when we have to finish one before we start the other?
The HVAC work and the roof work, although they are related because the units are on top of the roof, that work can basically occur at the same time before or after. Even though they are physically connected, the work is relatively independent.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item 1M, council workshop with 4A board on Tuesday, March 17. Ms. Turner?
Yes, I just want to talk about it in the meeting. But we have the 4A that we need to get together and have workshops on as we prepare to do our restructuring of our bonds. One of the things that we talked about was having on our off week, having a meeting with other entities. We had a workshop with 4B, EDC. We've been keeping on schedule, and so it's now its time for 4A to meet. And we can discuss Boys and Girls Club. But I didn't reach out to Boys and Girls Club the day after having their board meeting that night. So I don't know if you can attend, but we can talk about that if you'd like to have this date or just if we can talk about a different date.
Yeah, because it's not going to be action item. We can set the date for whatever.
So we're just looking at the date. You can look at the 30th if you'd like.
31st.
31st. But the 17th is kind of a good date. It looks like it's not going to be a good date for Boys and Girls Club. But 31st with a 2, then we move the last thing out. So it's a workshop that we can talk about for the 4A. The 31st would also be a good date if you cared to look at that date because it would be after we would have had the audit. And we would have had those numbers, and your financial advisor's going to start crunching those numbers as we talk about restructuring. One of the things that I have in your... Have to talk about the direction of what you want the 4A to be. One of the themes that kept coming up in our previous budget workshops and other workshops was what the direction's going to be. They have to take charge of us too, this financing. We need to work together and collaborate. So do we have any suggestion, the 17th or the 31st? The 31st. Yep, 31st, great. 31st. All right, so I'll put that together. We can post that agenda, and that's the end of my report on that issue, ma'am.
Is it a short amount of time?
We can make it typically 6:30 for workshops. And I know some people have a hard time of we shouldn't have problems with forums, so...
6:30 is good.
6:30 is good, right. Thank you.
Monica, did you know what you said? They said 6:30.
Oh, man, there actually is a CNA on 2G, apparently.
The rest is the 2G?
So can we amend this? Can we change the date?
Well, if we've already got a CNA on here, we can just do it.
Can we just change?
Or we can just strike that and just change the date. There doesn't need to be an action item for scheduling immediately.
You have to vote. Okay, now we're going to go on to 2A, consideration in action to approve Ian Gray's cycle ranch request for funds from Hotel Motel Tax. Ms. Henrietta?
Yes, as you know, I'm trying to start a process so that they present one council meeting and actually you can approve or make a change unless I read something very quickly. Mr. Gray is here, actually. He presented to you last week in reference to cycle ranch. I believe the amount he is requesting is $30,000 in reference to advertising. You have his proposal. And so staff is recommending that you approve the funding for the Gray cycle ranch request for Hotel Motel Tax in reference to the event publicizing that's coming up.
What days is it again?
It's Memorial Day weekend, so it's the 22nd through the 24th of May.
I'm sorry?
Is it 22nd?
The 24th of May.
The 24th of May, Memorial Day weekend.
I'm all for the cycle ranch, but I'm hearing different comments. Are we waiting to create this board to fund projects? Or are we going to just pick and choose which one we're going to work for?
I think that'd be the best and, you know, non-biased way for us to disperse, you know, the Hotel Motel Tax, you know, instead of, well, let's approve this and let's approve this. And, you know, we still have the final say, so, but I think it still needs to be adequately, you know, gone into detail.
The other thing is, is with, I guess, like the timing constraint? I mean, they're having, you know, I guess, May 22nd, and then a riverbed happening on May 17th?
I think it'd be done fairly quickly. I mean, if we approve the bylaws tonight, and then, you know, we already have... I mean, I'm assuming that there's already people in line for the...
Well, it's a hard decision, Councilman, because one of the things that... I'm all for this tourism, and I'm all excited about it, and I wanted to go forward. But I am perplexed between the fact that sometimes groups haven't met yet and sometimes it takes a little while to get a rhythm. I think we've probably got our rhythm going here, but it takes a little time to get the rhythm. And I know May is right around the corner, and so that's my concern.
The gentleman made a good presentation last week, and I think most of us were in agreement that, you know, that it is a good thing for the city. And I think it's a little different than this other operation with the event center where we're having to use different people, starting off with some of the employees from the city. But where in his case, he's already done all the work.
Cindy, did you just... I have a question. Just to bring up, based on what Eric's saying, as I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the purposes of the committee is to present... is to decide who to present to the council. Well, these people, like Mr. Ian, he's already presented to the council. So I agree with Mr. Guerrero that these items probably need to be voted on because it's been several months since the city council decided to have a committee, and we still at this point do not have a committee. And if you guys for some reason table the bylaws tonight, we're pushing all that back even further.
And I agree with Mr. Guerrero, and it brought, you know, brought it to light, you know, that, you know, he has done all the research, he has done all the footwork. And, I mean, it does take the city staff out of the equation, you know, rather than, I mean, the funds are worth... The funds are there, so...
One minute of phenomenal idea, but that's their purpose.
Now, I'm going to make the motion to approve the Ian Gray's cycle ranch request for funds from Hotel Motel Tax.
Okay, may I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guerrero. I'm second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman Dejar, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Yes.
And Councilman Abilis? Motion carries by your seat. Now, we're going to go back to... I'm sorry?
I just want to say thank you.
Okay, item 2B, consideration of action to approve the transfer of deeds from EDC to the City of Louisville.
Okay, so this is something we've been talking about, going back and forth, back to our budget time, and we can do that. This is a housekeeping issue as well as a transfer of some property. In your package, our attorney has reviewed, EDC's attorney has reviewed, this transfer of property.
Actually, I need to make a comment on this because Tommy Baker called Howard Herger in the consideration that we had, 92 months of use of public facilities. Howard had told us they still wanted to use the beer barn. He got with Tommy and Tommy said, "No, we want out of that. We don't want anything to do with it." We're talking about still using the city hall, 92 months of free use of city hall for our offices, which, since they were created, they've always had their offices here. So it's really not putting the city out of anything. It's just to have some sort of consideration in the agreements there. So they won't use the beer warehouse at all. That would be solely city property if this is approved. The only thing they would do is have seven years and eight months of free rent at city hall to have their offices.
Now, this is an income property for the beer warehouse. I do plan on renting it so we can talk about the fee schedule and those kind of things later on. But earlier in the year, EDC opted to wanted to sell the property. They... It's cloudy. I mean, between the city-owned part of the parking lot and the Union Pacific and the easement rights, it's just too cloudy to come up to them to sell, so they just give it to the city. So it had a value, so they're not giving that particular property. So it has a value, so 92 months times whatever they're paying for rent that'll come forward. Now, what we wanted to do in the agreement is they have different tracks, and so they suck in different parcels. The easy ones to talk about are the two streets that we talked about. One of them is... One of them is the Veterans Lane. That's a street. There's a Veterans Park that needs to transfer. But just the street is what we're talking about, so that's one of the parcels.
Veterans is Veterans Drive, then there's... And there's Long Oak Drive.
Is it front of the...
Yes. That whole little that comes in and goes around, that's Veterans Drive. That needs to be a city street, so that needs to be dedicated to the city.
No, no, these are all used.
Long Oak Drive needs to be... Is a city street that needs to be dedicated to the city. EDC needs to dedicate. Those are the housekeeping items that we're talking about. There's also the small parcels along the hiking bike trail that EDC has ownership on. We need to transfer those to the city since we're going to maintain, keep up with the hiking bike trail. And reference to, it's not property, but actually the building itself, the depot itself, is part of this package that they would actually give us the building. It actually sits in the right-of-way of the Union Pacific. So that's part of it. So those are the kind of things. Monica, Seagroup Park?
Katarana Park.
Is one thing that we definitely need to have under our control and ownership as we talk about expanding for the new sewer point. I was mistaken, thinking that the skate park wasn't ours, but it is ours. But the park in... Yes, subdivision, ma'am. North Crest? North Crest, that park that's at the end of that subdivision, that needs to come to the city as well because EDC owns it.
It's not a park. It's a parcel of land.
It's a parcel of land that's supposed to be used for a park. And when I come up with a plan, I'm taking it back to EDC and say, "Give me some money so that they can fund and equip that park." I believe they have $15,000 set aside in the budget, but we're going to be looking for that and much, much more. So, but we need to have ownership to get rent. So that's what we're going to have before you. There are seven tracks. The North Crest land actually is broken down into four different parts.
And Ron, do we know what it's going to cost us to get that roadway opened up so we can get to that part?
No, ma'am, we have no idea. We have not had anybody look into that yet because it's not my property. So I'm not going to spend to do research on a property that doesn't belong to the city. But we can look into that, and we did find out the mutual money that it is city property.
And we're taking one action for all these pieces of property?
Yes, because it's all one transaction. So it's three separate documents there. We've got the one deed for the seven pieces of real property, the actual land. You've got the bill of sale that's for the actual buildings that are on the beer warehouse and...
So see, that we approve them all or reject them all?
Right, because they're all one package deal. And then the rental agreement is the payment for the seven tracks.
And who said... Who made the package deal? EDC?
It was all presented from Mr. Guerrero. So they all kind of go together. The city can't pick and choose, "I want this lot and I want this lot." It's all kind of...
All right. I'm going to make a motion to table item 2B. And I'd like to see a breakdown per plant or per piece of land.
For what sort of a...
You said Katarana, you said the park on Park North Crest.
Should be in the package.
It's all there.
For us to vote on each item.
Oh, to accept each individual, yeah.
That would have to go back to...
That has to go back to EDC to see if they'll approve that or if they'll just hold all the properties instead of transferring any.
Is there a property you're concerned not taking?
What are the repercussions if we don't accept them? I mean...
They stay with ownership of the properties and they would have to pay for...
And reference to the streets, reference to the streets, the two streets, the Veterans.
Veterans and Long Oak.
And Long Oak, they need to be city streets because if someone...
Because we can't maintain them.
We can't maintain them. We can't enforce anything or give tickets on them because technically, if they don't have ownership of them, they're private jobs. So those two things we need to get into. And reference to the Katarana Park, as we're getting ready to expand our sewer point, our corridor engineer, we need to have that property as ownership, as a buffer. So we need to be able to give that buffer because the plant's getting much bigger. It's already there, which is inconvenient, so we need to have ownership for that as we go forward in reference to it. The other ones are just along the hiking bike trail, the beer warehouse, those kind of things that we talked about. It's up to you all to decide. It needs to all be one because we need to be able to maintain. It's always been an issue of is the city supposed to maintain? Since I've been here, city maintains it, EDC maintains it. We're trying to do the hiking bike trail. As I mentioned to you earlier, one of the things we're trying to do is apply some granting along that way. We have to have ownership and approve it. It's what continues.
Who maintains those properties right now?
The city employees will maintain them.
And the city gets reimbursed from EDC to maintain it?
No, we do not, no. We received several complaints about the condition of Katarana Park. We've received several complaints, so we just start chopping down and to doing that. Hiking bike trail, the city has been maintaining it. And actually, we haven't maintained the rural streets because we haven't taken ownership of those two.
So basically, it's a... By taking in these parcels of property, they're not going to put more workload onto the city?
No, we're actually continuing to... It'll clean up their books as well as ours.
Which property we can make use of?
We can definitely use. Now, it is a revenue. I think Gloria's trumping it a bit for the beer warehouse. She probably can make what they're paying for us now, when, times two because we really want to be able to market that. It's used occasionally, maybe two or three times a month, but I'm quite sure Gloria's going to buy a brand new calendar so she can book that one.
I think they're working on the beer warehouse as to getting rid of it for a while now.
They wanted to sell it, and they can't sell it without us because we on the parking lot on their way. So they can't sell it without us, the city. So we might as well just take ownership of it.
It's either the city grant it to the ECU or the ECU grant it to the city in order to sell it, correct?
The problem with the beer warehouse that I made is mainly because of the Union Pacific, easement, and a lot of the issue. And so when Union Pacific gave the easement, they gave the easement to the city. We can't in turn give it to someone else. It happens to be...
They need to step aside and say, "Hey, they want that back." Right. The easement.
The road.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I think it's time for me to call for a point of procedure. Do you have a motion on the table, the big table?
I'm going to retract the motion, I'm going to move that we accept the properties that presented by our legal counsel, and after review by our legal counsel.
I will second that motion.
Do we have a motion by Councilman Tejada, second by Councilman Guerrero? Councilman O'Neal, please, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Okay, now we're going to go on to 2C, consideration in action to approve the engineering agreement with Cobb Finney.
Mayor, in your packet, the attorney has reviewed Cobb Finney, which is the third engineer that you want to approve, this is their standard typical agreement, he has made changes to as noted there, so that we can start giving them assignments in reference to annexation in the other engineering projects. So Chris, do you have any comments on the standard engineering agreement?
Lou actually took the lead on this, but I did look it over, and it's likely happened with some of the other ones, where we have an overall agreement, and then each individual project that's assigned by the City Council is done via task order, and that's what sets out what the budget is for that specific task, what the parameters are, and everything is contained within that document. So this is just the overall, we're going to keep you on retainer, we're going to have you around, and then if we need to call you up, we'll issue you a task order then.
And we can terminate them at any time?
Yeah. It's like 15 days notice, and then you can terminate the, the work that's being done.
So Eagle's recommendation is to go with?
With the changes. And they've agreed to it as well? I don't know, I don't know that answer.
I, I've sit on the email, and he said they have no exceptions to the changes that they're making.
So they're okay with that?
Yes, they're going to, because they prepared that they're going to make the changes, the adjustments of the attorney said, and they're getting fully executed on that subject.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
I assume so.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion by Councilman Tejada, second by Councilman O'Neal, please? Councilman Nieto, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Guerrero?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Now we're going to go on to item 2D, consideration in action to approve the visitors and tourist bureau bylaws.
And I think there was a proposed motion to table, did you all want to hear that first, or did you want to go first?
Let's go through, let's go through.
Sorry, steal a podium from you for a second? Like I said earlier, these are all, these are pretty simple bylaws that we can just run through relatively quickly. That Article 1 just sets out scan difference, what the name is, what it's there for, it's to be a purely advisory board to the City of Florisville, it has no authority, it has no budget, it receives no funding, it is a purely volunteer board that, out of the goodness of their heart and community spirit, people volunteer for, meet with these entities, and then bring them to council. Council can still go outside the board if there's something that a council member wants to bring, or council can override any opinion that's given by this board. Article 2 on there is the board directors of the board, that's the seven members, 2.3 the composition, it'll end up being two members from the City of Florisville, the hospital district, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, and Wilson County. There was the issue brought up of whether they have to be residents of the city, the city's appointed, that's an issue for the board, that's not answered in this document, so it would be something for the council to decide. If we vote on these tonight, it could be part of the changes that are recommended, if that passes, we can incorporate those into the final. Term of office, we have set it two years, maximum of three terms, so you have somebody potentially on there for six years. The two that are appointed by the City Council, anybody can be removed at any time, the other entities would have sole control over their appointments. Meetings would still be open meetings, even though it's not technically required, we still want to have in the bylaws that they're subject to that, because they are going to have representatives of public bodies. Quorum is standard, procedure and records, ducky minutes, like anybody else, again, even though it's not required, just to have in there. The bylaws and the changing of the bylaws we have in here can be done by the board or by the city. So if you all decide you want to change the bylaws, you can vote on it, it requires eight days' notice to them in saying, we're going to change the number of directors, or we're going to change how many years you can serve. The city retains control over that. Article 3 is the officers, you've got a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, and we left treasurer in there because, four officers, so you have a meeting, if somebody's out, somebody can step in, even though the treasurer really has no power because there's no money to keep rent over. It's just a unnamed one there. Article 4, I kind of skipped ahead, that's about the amendment to the bylaws, and 5 is they can have a seat. So these are about the simplest bylaws you can possibly have for any organization. But I know there are some questions, like the residency requirements, things like that, that, you know, it's, it's up for the council to decide how they'd like to address those issues.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the visitors and tourist bureau bylaws.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
Before we take a vote, ma'am, can we add one thing about the residents of Florisville?
If everybody's standing?
You can get a later date.
And, and that's one thing, the city can always amend the bylaws, so the city could do that unilaterally later, but it could also be, since it's to approve, we could have a motion with, with somebody's suggestion on there, if that doesn't pass, then a motion to accept them as they are, or, there's actually already a motion on the floor to accept them, so it would have to either be retracted or go back.
I'm correct. Whenever you, whenever you take people away from, out of the city, I mean, look at the, the hospital, the hospital has, you know, people that are outside of the city limits, you know, within their, within their board, and it's very, very much minimized as well.
And, and there is representation from outside the city already, Wilson County, so anybody, somebody from Stockdale could be on it, the Chamber of Commerce obviously has no restrictions necessarily for inside the city, the school district goes around the city borders.
Chris, I think there's a misunderstanding.
The Chamber of Commerce, I mean, finding a board member who lives within the city limits your own trouble.
Right. And each of these entities would be able to determine how they want to appoint their members. We have, this, well, this is the bylaws for the whole entity.
The requirements for city residents.
Would be only for the city, for the two, for the city.
So just to clarify, out of a seven-member board, only two would be from city?
Right, and everybody else would be only.
Only two would be appointed.
By the city.
Right.
And those will, they'll only be two restricted from Florisville?
Right, if that's the council's decision, correct.
Okay, and the other county, other representatives that are coming from the school district or the hospital board, are those approved by the council?
No. They get to, because there's no power to the board, it's all purely advisory, they get to appoint whoever they want to appoint. So if Judge Jackson wants to appoint, like I said, somebody from La Vernea, they're free to do so.
Council has the last say, right?
No.
No, only on the two.
On, on, on.
Oh, yes. And before any money is spent, that comes to council. Like I said, they have absolutely zero budget, they have zero ability to obligate anything.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a motion and a second to accept those bylaws as they're written. You can't modify that with written as it is now, unless they vote no.
Well, or unless Councilman Yato rescinds his second, and then Councilman Artyres rescinds his, his motion, then they could vote on whether that motion, their new motion is presented.
You can have discussion before, before you have the final vote?
That's where it's, I just go, I mean.
Okay, so we have a.
So Mr. Johnson, there is a motion and a second, so we have to decide. There's already a first and a second, is there? Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman O'Neal, second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman Tejada, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Councilman Guerrero?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four. Okay, 2E, consideration in action to approve the city manager's budget for the holiday extravaganza.
This is just, I mean, you started the budget, it's not concrete, just give an idea, we're looking at the tourist visitor board take over this, have a role with it, I mean, we could basically just give them their first.
Their first fund?
Their first, their first fundraiser, and they control it from there as far as, you know, the, the type of entertainment that they're giving, and then they bring back to us for approval.
Which they may actually come back with a different budget number than.
Yes.
Than they may have.
Yes, definitely, but this is, you know, is it in the ballpark? Am I totally wrong, did I miss the mark? Is that kind of what you're looking for, or, you know, is I could give the directions going forward?
Yeah, I think it's in the ballpark, I mean, about 50, 60,000 dollars as far as budget expenditure.
Well, a lot of it comes back in, in ticket sales, so.
Ma'am?
It's a good number for the overall expenses, but you're going to get a lot of that money back in ticket sales.
Okay, then can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the city manager's budget for the holiday extravaganza.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman O'Neal, second by Councilman Nieto. Councilman Tejada, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Guerrero?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five zero. On to item 2F, consideration in action to approve tank, tank maintenance repairs for M&amp;S engineering recommendations. And a motion.
I guess all the, the numbers you presented, they weren't all final, right?
The number that he's thinking to that weren't final were actually the numbers for the relocation of the tank.
For the plaza, for the little ladder and everything else.
Within your packet, it's about 10,000, 10,500, it's already funded, I assume, to approve it, because we have to, I'm going to have to move money within the line, but this is one of the things in reference to, to report.
What's your recommendation here?
I recommend that we can do this, and put this on the ad, so we can make sure, is it obvious?
First is, okay, so 10,000.
You say 10,000?
10,016, 10,016, sorry.
10,060, I recommend this, and then what we're going to do is make sure we program that, we'll text the tanks up inspection, and we make sure to readdress those issues. It's a maintenance issue, so we need to get this on a maintenance cycle.
Did we say?
10,000.
60 dollars. So what do you add?
It's on item 2F, there's a cover page, so it's the in-service cleaning on the plaza, thanks for us, 1950, and then.
650?
Yeah, 650 for holes on the roof, 210 for a gas pit on the overflow.
Your main cost was about 40,000 dollars?
Yeah, 4850.
4850 for the ladder?
That's the big one.
And then the smaller things like those, the locks and the hatches, and those kind of things, the signs are done by staff, we've already done it, our secretary wrote those signs, so those are already in place.
The signs and the locks.
I make a motion to approve tank maintenance repairs for M&amp;S engineering recommendations. Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilman O'Neal, please. Councilman Tejada, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Guerrero?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Meeting adjourned at 9:40.
That was the end.